Okay, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the February 21st Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting 2017. We'll move right into the consent agenda. In the consent agenda, we have approval of minutes for January 10th, 2017, approval of payroll for February 6th and February 20th, 2017, approval of claims February 9th and February 16th, 2017. Also included is our comp time report, treasurer's monthly report for January 31st, 2017, and also included in the consent agenda is the Porter Regional Hospital Response Data Report for Porter EMS from January 1st, 2016 to through December 31st, 2016. And also under the consent agenda will be the Memorial Opera House. We have four service agreements: Bobby Sue, Cavett, artistic service agreement, Christopher Stallum artistic service agreement, South...
The next two are rental agreements.
Yeah, and then the next two are rental agreements for South Shore Orchestra and Rob Harkel, the venue rental agreement, which there's four dates included in that. So those are the items that are on the consent agenda. I will open the floor to the commissioners.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Let's move into new business. Under the commissioners, we have an appointment to make for the Shared Ethics Committee. I will open the floor for any recommendations or nominations.
We have some good applications. I'd like to nominate or make a motion to appoint Courtney Smith of Chesterton.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Courtney C. Smith of 345 Cary Lane, Chesterton, Indiana, to become our representative for the Shared Ethics Advisory Commission. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. We will now move to the...
Can I...
Sure. Go ahead.
We need to appoint one of us to be elected official for...
I make a nomination for Laura Blaney to be on the Shared Ethics Commission.
Second.
Oh, we got a second argument. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. We have appointments to the Redevelopment Commission. This is a board that we are looking in the future here for the Board of Commissioners to start energizing a little bit more than maybe some of the things that we've done in the past. We marketed and advertised for appointments to this RDC. With that, I will open the floor. I think we got three nominations in for two appointments, and with that, I would open the floor to the commissioners for the appointments of those two positions.
Well, we had, again, some good applications. I'd like to nominate Robert Gilianna.
Oh, that's Jason.
Jason, I'm sorry.
Second. We have, for the first position, we have a motion and a second for Jason Gilianna, who abides at 3703 Goodrich Road, Valparaiso, Indiana. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. For the second position, I would like to nominate Stephen Solarsky, who is out of Valparaiso, Indiana. Second. We have a motion and a second for Stephen Solarsky from Valparaiso, 2455 Naples Drive, Valparaiso, Indiana. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. We will be sending out a notice for the Redevelopment Commission as to when we will be meeting next, and we will be reorganizing, so stay tuned for more information on the Redevelopment Commission. I think it's going to be some exciting stuff, so we'll move on along from there. We have one more appointment, and this would be to the Porter County Stormwater Board. This is a position that was relinquished just recently, and now we have to fill that position. So I would like to open the floor. We did get one application in from the individual, so with that, I would open the floor of the board for the nomination of that individual.
Well, luckily, the one was a good one, and this one is Robert Gilianna.
We have a motion.
You mean Jason?
Robert.
Robert.
Bobby.
All right. Second.
We have a motion and a second for Robert Gilianna to represent Porter County on the Stormwater Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. So now we have all of our boards up to speed and fully...
Functional.
Functional, I guess I should say. So a little bit of more housekeeping. So now we'll move on. We have a Revelation Waste Partners contract. I don't... Is there anybody here from Revelation Waste Revelations? Oh, there you are. Come forward. State your name and who you're with and...
Right there.
Yeah, just sit there.
Okay. The name is Jason Rowe, Office Manager for Revelation Waste Partners.
Okay. And are you folks located... Where are you folks located?
Right here in Valparaiso, 23 North Washington.
Okay. Do we have any questions of this gentleman with regards to what Revelation Waste Partners does?
What was your first name?
Jason.
Jason. Jason, in short, you're going to be reviewing the contracts that we currently have with waste haulers and evaluating those and where... See if there's any opportunity there for us to save some money.
Correct.
And you do not get paid unless we save money.
Correct.
All right. That's a heck of a deal.
It is. It is. It's a great service, and we do everything. We do a full review of everything. Like you said, if there's savings, we share in the savings. If there is savings, then we do everything: the billing, all the service management with the vendors and...
Yeah, that Commissioner Good and I were reviewing. We had pulled the contracts, the waste contracts that we currently have on, and to our surprise, we found out that each individual building had its own contract, and some of those... And with automatic renewals on them, some of those contracts date back to the late '90s. So I'm sure there's some improvement there to be made.
Yeah, definitely opportunity to refresh some prices in the market.
Well, then also deal with the issue of the amount of times they're dumped, because there are times when they need to be dumped, more and less, and that's something that you work with, right?
Correct. Yeah, we evaluate all of that, so not only the price, but how often it's being dumped based on the volume that's in the cans, basically.
And also out at the jail, where you have, you know, you no doubt have a substantial amount of food waste that is being dumped, to look in to see if there's a better way of using that food waste other than just putting it into a landfill and possibly saving some money or making some money with it, so...
Correct, yeah. We look at all angles, you know, environmentally safe, sustainability. So if there's a way to, let's say, reuse some of the waste, maybe sell it to farmers, et cetera, we look into all of that. What is the best possible way to dispose of it?
How long have you been in business?
About 16 years.
You're right here in Valparaiso.
Yes.
That's super.
Yes, it is.
Looking over when we started gathering all the contracts from all the different locations, for county government, based on the data that we have as of the last year, I think we're right in the area of around $50,000 to $60,000 a year in waste spend. So obviously, we're looking to lower that number. And the other... So just to put it in context for the record, the other thing that we're going to have to do is if we do move on this contract, we will have some retraining of our staff, because now it happens instead of someone just from an office picking up the phone and calling someone to come pick up the waste, they will now contact Waste Revelations and they will do the work. So as far as managing our refuse, it will pretty much be all taken out of our folks' hands. They just... They will have one number to call, they call it, and then it takes... It goes from there. So we're effectively getting out of the trash business here as far as managing it, and who better than to have somebody that knows all the tricks and knows all the billing tricks and all the other things that go on with the trash industry. So I feel very good about that direction, and I think it's a way... I do believe we will save some money by doing this and do it the right way as well. So with that, any other questions from the board?
No, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract for Revelation Waste Partners.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second for the Revelation Waste Partners contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a letter of agreement to allow Mary Ann Gregg open and close the Paul C. Zona Senior Wildlife Sanctuary on a daily basis for $225 a month. To give you a little history of this, this has been... The Greggs have been opening up the Zona Wildlife Sanctuary for quite some time. When we had gotten a request in our... To our office here for payment for that, there was some discussion as to if we had any type of contract or anything of record that would substantiate this, and we... It was a pretty old contract that had been around for quite a long time. So what we decided is the board is to bring this up in front of everybody, revisit it, re-enter it into the record, so we have a current record of what's going on up there. And so this is more, from my perspective, just a housekeeping situation here that we need to take care of.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Steven Kromkowski, DLZ... There he is. This is the application and certificate for payment number six from Larson-Danielson for the Porter County Annual Shelter. Hello, Steven.
Good morning.
Morning.
Steven Kromkowski with the DLZ. That's submitted from Larson-Danielson, who is the design builder on the project. Pay up number six for the amount of $455,202.07. That represents a little over 80%. They do have the floor down. It is accessible now. There's a meeting actually this Thursday, and so things are progressing fairly well. There's a preliminary punch list that's expected March 3rd, so things continue to be on schedule, if not safely, ahead. Two items to note. One is that we still have a $40,000 allowance that has not been touched yet. We ended up doing a change order when we added things back in rather than tap into that. And then also, there is another credit that is in the process of being processed. It's more... Let's wait till the very end, so we're not doing two or three different change orders at the time. So financially, you're in good shape with the project, so just to let you know.
So we're good financially and slightly ahead of ourselves of getting it open. It's a pretty good deal.
It is a good deal.
Motion to approve the...
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve application number six of our soon-to-be reality animal shelter in Porter County. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Steven.
Thank you.
Next up on the docket, we have a petition of the Indiana Dunes National Lakeshore to vacate subdivision right-of-ways in West Chester Township for Doomwood subdivision, Hollywood subdivision, and Potawatomi Vista. And with that, I will turn it over to Bob Thompson. Good morning, Bob.
Good morning. Just so you know, they have done all the notification requirements, and we advertised it in the newspapers. This petition was before the commissioners, a number of years back, 2012, I believe it was. They had some additional items, but at this time, it's just the three subdivisions. I had the ordinances written up, but we never followed through with the ordinances as far as actually vacating the roads within these three developments. National Lakeshore owns all of the lots within these developments, all of the land. They could have easily have vacated the entire subdivision themselves. This was probably the quickest and easiest way, though, to do this here, so just presenting it from... There is nothing built inside of these. They had torn down all of the structures that were inside of them. I know for a fact Potawatomi Vista, they've got the gates going across because we had problems and they had problems with people dumping trash in there. Hollywood, Martha, no structures in there. And Doomwood subdivision, if you can find it, good luck. It's pretty much overgrown.
That's what the photos look like.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a services contract for Umball and Associates, general services contract. Do we have anybody from Umball here? Scott, you want to give us a brief...
This is a general service contract that will allow ourselves and the auditor to be able to utilize Umball on a project-by-project basis. I think the idea was to go ahead and get a general service contract with Umball, and then whatever department that wants to use it will pay for whatever they're using for. But this... We want to use Umball for some planning issues that we want to deal with, and I believe the same thing with the auditor also had some planning issues that she wanted to use Umball with, too, so we did one general service contract with Umball.
And this would also cover in case the council wanted to use Umball as well, too. This is a services agreement for...
Correct.
That's sort of the fiscal body of government if we need to do some scenarios. I know they were very helpful with us in determining the stormwater fee and how that all worked through, and it went very well. So... And I think our last service agreement had expired, so we're here today to renew. So with that, I'll leave the floor open. Any comments or questions from the commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Now we're going to go to the Memorial Opera House.
Scott?
There he is. Hey, Scott.
Scott contacted me before the meeting. He has... He has laryngitis, so I will talk, tell you what I know.
You are an actor.
Mime it.
Mime it.
He could.
Go ahead, Laura. I'm sorry.
This is an additional that would include the additional funds from the tourism to pay for his marketing specialist.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
That's what they're for.
Yep. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign.
Scott says thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Scott. Doing great work down there. Speaking of great work, Lori Daly, Expo Center, come on down.
I had my...
Okay, good. Good morning, Lori.
Good morning.
Tell us what you're doing here. We have an additional appropriation from Fund 4005 and the amount of $20,000 to account 3340 advertising to increase advertising account to reflect additional tourism support.
So we had did our budget before the council and tourism gave us the additional money, so this is just the increase to reflect that.
Oh, okay. Okay, so this is more housekeeping than...
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Lori. Parks Department, Walter. Come on down. This is an ordinance establishing a fund for deposit of proceeds from an Indiana Lake, Michigan coastal grant to Porter County Parks Department. This is the second reading. So with that, Walter, any additional information or...
Nope.
Same. Same old, same old?
Same things before.
I'll make a motion to approve on second reading.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance establishing a fund for deposit of proceeds. This is the second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Public Chief Public Defender, Ken Elwood. Morning, Ken.
Morning, Chief President.
We have an ordinance here creating a non-reverting fund for receipt of Indiana Department of Corrections Grant for the Porter County Public Defenders Office.
Thank you. Porter County is a pilot program or a pilot county for a program through the Department of Justice to release nonviolent, low-risk offenders from jail, to essentially reduce the cost. I have been meeting for about a year and a half with the judges, or I designate the judges, Judge Jet, packed the jail prosecutor probation, and we applied for a grant and we received one, so this is to create that fund. I will pay the public defender, multiple public defenders that cover this position on a contract basis and not create an employed position in case it's not funded going forward.
Oh, thank you. Good move.
Yeah. Thank you.
Tell everybody that.
I'll try. I'll share the word.
Say it a little louder. Yeah. I think we picked it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We... I think this... We have to open up a...
Oh, we do.
I have to open up the public meeting. So with that, now we're going to open up a public meeting. Do we have anybody... Now that the public meeting is open, do we have anybody that's willing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Do we have anybody wanting to speak in favor of this ordinance second time? Do we have anybody in favor of speaking for this ordinance third time? Do we have anybody in the room that is willing to speak up against this ordinance? Please come forward. Is there anybody willing to speak against this ordinance? Please come forward. Second call. Third call and final call. Do we have anybody willing to speak against this ordinance? And with that, the public meeting is now closed. We will now open it up to the board.
Ken, how exactly is the grant money utilized?
Sheriff's Department also received a grant. Public defender received a grant. Prosecutor did not, but it basically is $52,000 to cover the initial bond hearing. So there will be a public defender at each initial bond hearing to have input on setting bond for those individual defendants. There is a risk assessment that's done through the PAC called IRAS, and so they ask certain questions and obtain certain static data like prior criminal arrests, and then they're rated moderate, high, low risk. The judge now has that information. The judge is still making the decision on bond. It's just giving them more information.
So and what... I'm sure you all have made some projections as to what percent of the existing population can we expect to be... You know, to be released?
This first phase is really about gathering data. There are really no projections as of yet. Again, Indiana is one of six pilot states that the Department of Justice has selected, and Porter County is one of six pilot counties in Indiana.
So they're in the infancy stage.
Yeah, exactly. Ironically, the Supreme Court of Indiana undertook their own pretrial release program at the same time, and now they've kind of merged together, so it's moving along, but I certainly, you know, maybe next year we'll be able to report back to you.
Yeah. Look forward to it. Any other comments or questions from the board?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the first reading of an ordinance creating a non-reverting fund for receipt of Indiana Department of Corrections Grant for the Porter County Public Defenders Office. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Do we have to do two readings?
Second reading.
So that's first reading.
That's first reading. If you guys want to, you can suspend the rules, get it unanimous, and just do it in one.
I'll make a motion to suspend.
Yeah, second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign.
Now do the motion again.
I'll make a motion on second reading to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for second reading of an ordinance creating a non-reverting fund for receipt of Indiana Department of Corrections Grant for the Porter County Public Defenders Office. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work you're doing out there.
Thank you.
You bet. Coroner's Office, Chuck Harris. We found out that Chuck has not received his contract back yet, so we're going to pass on that. Treasurer's Office, Michelle Clancy. Proposal to create tax information and maintenance agreement. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Good.
Good.
Okay, so what this is, is to improve our tax information website, actually replace the one we have with Allow website, which is our tax software vendor, our current vendor. And so it would be like seamless information swapping between what's in-house and what would be displayed on the website. Our current website is becoming antiquated very quickly, and this would allow access pretty much to the whole public: mortgage companies, title companies, everyone would be able to obtain information off the website.
Awesome. Vicki, is this in conjunction with everything we got going on?
Yes, it is. And I totally support this project. It's been in discussion for more than a year to have some other vendors provide services other than the current PADI program. This is the one where you have to download the Silverlight program, and my office has received a lot of complaints about it from the public, but they just can't access it very well.
And actually, Microsoft is not even supporting their own product anymore, so they are weeding out Silverlight. So everything that this website's based around is becoming obsolete.
So we're getting ahead of it?
Yes.
Excellent. Good to hear. Any other questions from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Allow Associates' proposal to create a tax information and maintenance agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Michelle. Don Wells in IT. Busy guy.
Morning.
Morning, Don.
The first one on here is the court changed her mind on the maintenance agreement for the last copier we got. She wanted it changed from 200,000 to 100,000 copies.
Open up the floor for the commissioners.
Can we just go through all these, Mr. Chairman? Do they have a problem?
We can. And so the first one down is a change in a maintenance agreement based on copies. What's the second one?
Second one is we added four more cables to the animal shelter for data and telephone. And the last one, wireless between courthouse and 40 prosecutors died a couple weeks ago, Second one is we added four more cables to the animal shelter for data and telephone. And the last one, our wireless between courthouse and 40 prosecutors died a couple weeks ago. So we added an emergency to bring in some fiber into the building. And this is just a contract from Netco to pay for that.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion to approve the Adams Remco copier maintenance agreement for the clerk's office, NIC invoice to install four new network cables there at the animal shelter, and Netco quote for new internet service for prosecutor's child support division.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Facilities Department, Matt, come forward. Morning, Matt.
Morning.
Why don't you give us a lowdown on this? I was good to see this on the agenda.
I was happy to see this door close.
I was too.
Commissioner Good and I, Commissioner Blain, you and I were in on some of these meetings, but I know Jeff and I had some additional meetings, and we've been really trying to get on top of this probably for about eight months. So basically what this is, everyone knows we have the jail sewer screen, which filters additional garbage that may make its way into the system, inmates flushing towels, garbage, rags, sheets. So this sewer screen captures all of this garbage. This is a maintenance agreement contract with Gertsen Water. They're out of Elko. I met them on site. Extremely competent vendor. They knew what they were looking at, and this is really specific equipment. So it was really nice that they knew what they were looking at, what they're talking about. So this is a three-year service agreement, basically turnkey, monthly, semi-annual, and annual inspections, and then a labor rate as well if anything is needed in terms of repair. So this big project that you guys undertook a few years ago to install, and now it's working, but it definitely needs maintenance, and this is definitely a good thing for Elko, for the sewer system, and for the jail.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, this was, I also thought the price for what we're paying was very fair as well, too.
And they were bad, yeah.
I think it's $4,800 a year, $400 a month to come out. Because I think what a lot of people don't understand is if this goes down, this affects the sewer system pretty much on the whole east side of Porter County here, so...
And the sewer screen was over a million dollars to install. So this $4,800 a year is nothing to, yes.
To maintain it.
Yep.
So I'm glad, again, I'm glad to see this being in some competent hands now. The only thing that I would ask is that when their reporting come in, that you share it with our office. I know you'll be the keeper of these reports. But also make sure that we let the jail know, too, as to what's going on, so they have some maintenance data, you know, share and share. Share the information is all I'm trying to say, which I'm sure you will, so.
Sure.
With that, open up the floor.
It's just an extremely expensive obligation to run a jail, isn't it?
I should know, yes. We're doing a good job. It works.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the Gertsen Water Management Company Sewer Screening Management Service Agreement for the jail. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Have a great day.
Thanks, Matt. Highway Department, Andy, come on up.
Come forward.
Morning, Andy. We have a request for an additional appropriation from Fund 1135 in the amount of $100,000 to account 3,950 contractual services for additional bridge invoices. What invoices are those for, again?
For Bridge 1008 for Clem Road and for Bridge 62 over the Kankakee River.
And the Clem Bridge was part of the Heritage Crossroads.
Yeah, but we could not use that money for it because of engineering and design.
Okay, okay. Any other questions from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for an additional appropriation from Fund 1135 in the amount of $100,000 to account 3,950 contractual services. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, just want, Andy, I'm sure that you have, I'm talking about the north area highway, is if you could put on your list the painting of McCool Road, Striping and Meridian Road?
Yeah, Meridian, I've already had several calls on that one. And also, there's talk about the state or federal government coming in and making it all mandatory for it to be reflective. I don't know if it's gonna pass or not, but if it does, we'll have to change everything.
Is that a bill downstate, or you're saying a federal?
Ray sent me the literature on it. It might be coming, they gotta vote on it still, so.
I believe it's 2019, 2020, and it has to do with HCD also, the United Transit.
Is it federal or state?
I believe that's gonna be federal because it's part of the money, the money on the United Transit.
But that would cost a lot of money.
Thank you. Thanks, Andy. Highway Engineering, Mike Novati, Robert Thompson, all districts. Morning, Bob, again.
Good morning. First one up is LPA Claim Number 23 for Bridge Inspections, reimbursement of $24,760. We received this money in the auditor's office already for reimbursements of bridge inspections. Asking for your approval on it.
I'll open the floor to the commissioners.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for LPA Claim 23. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Next item is supplemental agreement number two for Phase 2A of the bridge inspection program. This is underwater inspections and also scour inspections. It's part of the requirement that NDOT has for all bridges that have potential for scour.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Next one, South District. Supplemental Agreement Number One for the Construction Observation of Smokin' Division Road to be increased $31,600 for a total of $191,000. We also need to let you all know that this, right now, cannot be reimbursed by NDOT. We've exceeded the cap. Supposedly, there's a cap on this, and with this construction observation cost, this is 100% us.
And how much is that amount? Is that for both change orders?
No, the other change order that we have for Smokin' Division, I believe, is no charge on that. Change order number one on Smokin' Division, where they were talking about doing some, oh, I'm sorry, there is one that is safety-related where there was no charge. There is another change order on Smokin' Division where they, instead of doing a live treatment for the subbase, had to do a concrete treatment on it. That one is for $9,000.
That's number two.
I do not know if that, yeah, that's $9,940. I do not know if that is covered under the original design. Representatives, I asked, being longest enough representative to be here, if you had questions? That one, I guess I do not know if that is up for reimbursement. I do know for the supplemental agreement for the construction observation, the $31,600, we will not get reimbursed on that one, right now, it's looking like.
And what was, how much have we expended?
The total agreement, I believe, was in the neighborhood of $150-some thousand, $158, I have it on the next page. I should say, no, I don't. Item number two is where we're requesting to pay for the construction observation up to $136,000 of the original contract. We haven't paid for construction observation since June of last year.
Well, I think going forward here, we need to have a little bit better communication from our consultant here as to when change orders happen, and we need to somehow figure out a way to get this a little bit further up the food chain a little bit quicker. These things should've come to the board much sooner. I don't know why we're dealing with this almost a year and a half later, but I know your office has been working through all this since it's been given to you. So do we have any questions for the board, for the consultant, being longest enough, or do you want, anybody wanna bring them forward, or?
Yeah, or at the very least, you go back and tell them we would want a written explanation as to what all this is, you know?
As far as the supplemental agreement number one with the $31,600, NDOT has pretty much said that there is no reimbursement on that because there's a 12.5% cap, from what I'm understanding. I started getting all of this this morning on this. There's a 12.5% cap on this, so we've exceeded that. Within the contract, there were 18 weeks, I think, of construction observation, and we ended up exceeding that and going to 23. So what you're looking at here is the agreement of them exceeding what was originally in the contract of 18 weeks.
Did you wanna come forward and keep raising your hand? Why don't you come forward and state your name and who you represent?
Thank you. Hi, thank you. I'm Christian Fixley. I'm with being longest enough. Just wanted to help fill in some of the gaps and answer any questions that you guys might So NDOT requires that we present to the county a construction observation contract before it goes to letting, and then the contractor and NDOT release the schedule. So basically, the contractor makes their best guess as to how long a project will take to build, pre, post, and actual construction. So when we presented the original contract to you, we said it would take 17 weeks, and it ended up taking 23 weeks. We've contacted NDOT to ask if they could provide the additional funding that's left on this project, because there's actually $16,000 left that should be available to the county, because they've now removed that 12.5% cap in a lot of situations that we've dealt with. They have denied that for several reasons, one being there's still over $60,000 NPOs open on this project that the county hasn't submitted, but from what I've heard from the county, they've been working on catching, bringing those up to date. And they said that we're outside of the fiscal year, and those funds have now been brought back into the general funds at NERC. So it's just not available anymore. And that information came from Marcy, the LPA Director.
Any questions from the board?
I don't like it, but nothing you can do about it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Are we doing all four? The supplemental agreement number one?
Yes.
For construction observation of Smokin' Division, change order number one for Smokin' Division project, change order number two for Smokin' Division project, and supplemental agreement number four for Bridge 62, 625 West over the Kankakee River. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I do have another question. The purchase orders that you said still need to be submitted, where are we at on those about?
Item number two that we had down here under South District, Smokin' Division Road, the observation invoices of $136,000. What I was hoping with the process, instead of you all accepting and approving the creatus after, for the money coming back in from NDOT, what I wanted to do is bring the invoices down to you guys and say, this is what we got. Can we go forward with it, approve it, and then we'll start doing all the tracking of it, and then we'll let you know when we get the money back from NDOT and what fund it's gonna go into and everything. So I, now that you have approved this, we're gonna go forward with the actual payment of this $136,000. And then we're going to submit it into NDOT, and we're gonna try to get our 80% reimbursement of $109,000.
Try?
Try.
Is there a problem?
I, we're hoping there's not.
So are we?
We shall put in for the 80%.
Is there any kind of, when we do put in for 80% on any of these projects, is there any kind of timeline that it stays expected?
The main thing is we gotta put them in order, the claim forms in order on that. There's another one we're working on where it's confusing. We just have to make sure that we're doing this. What we're going to do is we're only allowed to do so many invoices, I think, on one claim. So we're working with NDOT on how we can put those listed down, put it in under the next claim item number, and then forward it to them for the reimbursement. This may have to go in a couple. We're hoping we can get it in under one claim to NDOT.
Well, thank you, Bob, for digging through all this. And hopefully, we can get those off to the state and get some good news back. So that's all we can hope for. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. The only other thing, I think, before we adjourn here, or recess, I guess would be the right word, we had yesterday received a couple phone calls from the press when I guess they saw on our agenda, in the consent portion regarding the Porter Regional Hospital response data. And there were some questions that came to us regarding the ambulance contract, which I think with Porter Regional Hospital, that I think a lot of people know over the years has somewhat been of a hot button or a, I don't know, a lot of questions regarding it. And the response data report we got from Porter is for fiscal year 2016. It gives us a bunch of information on ambulance service calls, other data that we, as the commissioners, have sat down and taken a look at. For the record, we, Attorney McClure and myself, have met with Porter Hospital. We've had an opening conversation. We're exchanging information right now. We are looking at all different components of this agreement, but it's gonna take some time to vet through. It also, as we're working through the 800 megahertz radio system and the radios, believe it or not, the ambulance service contract plays into that whole situation as well. So we're taking a step back, and we're looking at this from a holistic standpoint. I think some of you have been in our meetings before, how we've talked about looking at things holistically rather than just one-off. So the ambulance contract is part of this relook and this total picture look at our whole 911 first response type situation. So I know there's been a lot of angst between this contract, but I can tell you, our first meeting with Porter went very well. It was very positive. We learned a lot of things. They learned a lot of things. Now we're gonna continue to meet and continue to move forward and try to resolve this issue and come up with an outcome that is good for Porter County and is good for Porter Hospital, which is really what we want. So don't really wanna add to more than that. I just wanna let people know that we're working through it, and we're talking, and it's part of what we do up here. So don't wanna really get into it any more than that. It's just that we're doing our due diligence on behalf of the county. So I just wanted to make that real clear, so everybody sort of understood what was happening. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners before we recess? This board stands recessed.